Now called to order the meeting of the Board of Commissioners, March ninth, 2023, for the town of Mint Hill, North Carolina. We do have a quorum presence to conduct business. May I ask Mayor Pro Tem Dalton if he would lead us in the invocation, please?
Let us pray. Dear Lord, thank you so much for this day you've given us. We just ask that you continue to be with us for the rest of this afternoon, dear Lord, as we go into the business of the town, that we will make the decisions that's best for the community and for the citizens of this town. We ask all this in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. If you would please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Agenda item number three, additions, deletions, or arrangements of agenda items. Hearing none. Item number four, approve the minutes of the February third, 2023 called meeting in the February ninth, 2023 regular meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Of a motion and a second. Do I have any further comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number five, consent agenda. A, to accept the January tax collectors' report. B, to accept January treasurer's reports and financials. C, adopt changes to the personnel policy.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Of a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number six, I'll now open the public hearing on resolution to abandon an unbuilt right-of-way, Margaret Circle, in the town of Mint Hill, North Carolina. John?
Thank you, sir. Our request was submitted to the town to abandon an unbuilt right-of-way identified as Margaret Circle. North Carolina statutes 160A299 provides procedures for permanently closing right-of-ways. A resolution of intent was adopted by the Board of Commissioners on January 12th, 2023. The resolution was then advertised in the newspaper for four consecutive weeks. And then, as required by the statutes, the adjoining property owners were notified by certified mail, and staff posted signs at the right-of-way property. The final step is tonight, the public hearing and decision. Happy to answer any questions.
Have you questions from the board? Commissioner Long?
No, sir.
Commissioner Holton?
Not a thing.
Mayor Pro Tem Dalton?
No.
Commissioner Henderson?
No.
I don't have anybody else signed up to speak to that matter. It's this evening in the public hearing. So with that being said, I'll close the public hearing on the resolution to abandon unbuilt right-of-way Margaret Wallace Circle in the town of Mint Hill, North Carolina. Item number seven is a public hearing on ZC 23-3 filed by the Gray Family Real Estate for Tax Parcels Number 137-153-11 located at 11207 Blair Road to request to amend the zoning plan for Superior Storage to increase the total storage square footage for Phase Two. Is the applicant present?
Yes.
Would you like to come to the podium, sir?
And Bill, I can't show your presentation, so if you could just describe.
Yeah, yeah, that's okay.
We do have hard copies in front of us. If you just state your name and your address for the record, and then you have the floor, sir.
Sure. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is William Gray, and our business is at 11131 Blair Road here in Mint Hill. And I wanted to talk to you all tonight. I'm happy to say that after our four years, business is finally going pretty well there at Superior Storage, and we are ready to expand. And that's the purpose for me being here tonight. Originally, when I first started embarking on this, in the storage business, working with some people who I did not get the best advice from. So with Phase One, we put in 16,500 feet of space. And in the process of going through the rezoning, we went ahead and anticipated for Phase Two to get the zoning taken care of so that when it came time to expand, it would be done. Well, one of the things that I've learned in the last four years is that we did not build that space out as well as we could have. And that's the reason why I'm here this evening. We are asking to, instead of putting in the 16,500 square feet of space, to put in the 30,500 square feet of space. It will occupy the same amount of acreage as was discussed on the original rezoning plan. So nothing will change in terms of the amount of space that we'll be taking up.
I'll start with questions. Commissioner Henderson, any questions?
So with the additional 8,000 square feet, does that layout, how does that layout impact just visibility from Blair Road?
You really, you can't, you can't see anything from Blair Road. With Phase One, we actually put in storage, and we put in a little parking area in the back of the lot. And with Phase Two, we're not putting in that parking area. We are still going to put the brick facade on the east and west ends of the building, which was requested when we did Phase One. So that would, that would all stay the same. But as far as visibility from Blair Road, you can't, due to the topography of the lot, you just, you can't see.
Okay. Anything else?
Mayor Pro Tem Dalton?
What's the space between the buildings?
I want to say it's 25 feet between buildings. It's whatever is required by code for the fire department to get their trucks through, correct.
And the house that sits in front of that, any, do you, do you own that house?
Yes.
And what's the plans for that house?
And the red brick house at 1131?
The one on the Phase Two?
The one on Phase Two. When we went through zoning, or when we went through the process of getting rezoned for Phase One, the, that lot was divided in two so that I can continue to rent that house out. So right now it's a rental property, if you will. I am hoping to come talk to you guys here in a couple of years about possibly either expanding storage or some other ideas of flex space or something of that nature in that space.
Okay. And then on Phase One, do you have any plans for the house that's there or the yard that's in front of that house?
That's a good question. And depending on the day, you get a different answer. I can't make up my mind what I want to do with that. Ideally, I'm looking forward to potentially someday bulldozing that house because in terms of commercial use, it's not practical. Right now, the best thing I've come up with is flex space. Seems to be a popular item that people are looking for. And then, as I've driven around Charlotte, I'm starting to see these buildings are office space buildings where I guess people come in and, you know, they rent an office, you know, 500 square feet or something like that. Again, that's something that I would need to come and approach you all with before doing something of that nature.
And the reason I'm asking that, I've drive by that building five, six times a week, and presently, it looks very nice, but they've been times where there'd be a lot of stuff stored out in the front of that steel girder, steel U-Haul trucks all over in the front yard.
Right. It has been requested via John Hord that we not keep the U-Haul equipment up front. So all that stuff has been moved to the back of the property with the exception of a couple of the smaller trucks, which we park by the front gate.
That's all I've got for now.
Mr. Holton?
Right now with Phase One, what's, what's your capacity at there right now?
In terms of the storage space, we have 16,500 square feet of space, and it breaks down to 164 individual units.
I guess I'm more talking like how many of them are leased right now? How much, how much available space? How many portable units?
The last I checked, which was Sunday, we were at 93% occupancy.
And so this Phase Two, it's going to keep the same entrance, that long drive that comes in, and it's just going to split down the middle?
Correct.
And then it'll all be fenced?
Correct.
Okay.
Are you familiar with the facility?
I am.
It's going to basically be exactly like the Phase One. The fence will continue around. Everything will be a security gate entrance. And the buildings are actually going to be right next to that paved area in the back when you drive through there.
Okay. And then that lot, well, it's the same parcel, but it kind of has that little finger that comes right up to Blair Road right there?
The 11, the 11131?
It's all part of this Phase Two plot here?
Right. The Phase Two is on 111, or 11207. And then there's a lot in front where the blue houses, that is 11203.
Okay. Yeah, the house is there, but it's, I'm just, I mean, we don't have it on the screen, so you can.
Sure. Absolutely.
You can walk up here just so I can.
Can I say it without my mask?
You're fine, you're fine. I'm just, I'm looking at this little finger right here. Because it looks like that whole lot goes up, and then there's this finger.
No idea what the building looks like. Here, y'all, except for this flat line drawing. We got no renderings, nothing. Need a presentation. So we got no idea what the building looks like.
Well, and that's, and that was my thing. I just, I just want to make sure there's not going to be another road coming. It's just going to be that one existing one coming in right there.
Everything, everything will stay the same.
I got you, I got you. That's all I have. Thank you.
Sure.
Commissioner Long? No, sir. Thank you. Dale kind of stole my thunder there on the U-Hauls out in the front and that kind of thing. That's something that I personally would have to insist on before I'd even revisit this project. And question for John, history lesson, John. They came back to us at one point, and the original plan, if I remember it right, they were going to build all brick structures. And then they came back to us and decided that it was too, it was cost prohibitive. So they were going to do brick facias, which is what Phase One is now. Am I thinking about the right project, Tony? Thought I was. So on this Phase Two, since we didn't revisit it during that Phase One, is it still set up as brick structures or is that part of what we're changing? Is from full brick structures to brick facade? Is that part of the request?
So I'll have to dig into that. The way I remember it is in 2015, the storage facility was approved, Phase One and Two. They came back, and maybe you can help me with this, they came back in 2016, and they wanted amendment to Phase One. And with that amendment, there was discussion about brick, and he agreed to do the materials. And I think the agreement was to put it on the end walls, if I remember right.
That is correct. And in your memory, you are right. And again, that was part of the bad advice that I got. I was being told that I could build brick for the same price that I could put in the metal buildings.
Yeah, I remember laughing out loud that night.
Folks, I'm here to tell you, that is not the case.
Right.
So, but to answer your question, Phase Two will have the brick facade at the ends of the building.
Okay. So that, that's part of the request then? Because it may still say full brick structures on Phase Two, because I'm not sure that we revisited that in Phase Two at the time.
Yeah, he's not asking tonight, I don't, I haven't heard you, to waive any of the material requirements. So what was approved previously still holds with this?
Which is the brick facade or the full brick structure is why I'm asking that?
Uh.
For Phase Two, I'm not.
Well, I don't remember it being a full brick structure. I just remember the.
Do you remember it being a full brick structure?
Originally, we talked about with Phase One, it being a full brick structure. But then we, I came and talked to you all again about putting in the metal buildings with the, the brick facade on the ends.
And my question is to everybody in the room, did we address Phase Two at that time, or is Phase Two still under the brick structure where we're going to have to do this again when we get ready to build this thing?
I'm not putting in brick buildings for Phase Two, if that's what you're asking.
Okay. So we need to make a point of that, is my point. But when we, when we go to the planning board with that, we need to make sure that the planning board knows that, well, regardless of what we did in 15, that it needs to be brick facade from visible.
That's right. Because when they, when they amended Phase One, Phase Two was silent. We did not discuss Phase Two at all. So you're, you're correct. If anything was done differently on Phase One with the amendment, it did not affect Phase Two. So that means everything would hold from the original.
So this amendment needs to reflect that.
Yeah.
That was my point. And back to the original point that I made, that front, I drive by there quite often as well.
Right.
We'll make sure that, not just when you're coming to a hearing at Town Hall, but the rest of the year around, that we keep that clean so our citizens don't have to look at that in front of the building.
Absolutely. And, and I think Mr. Hord will back me up on this, we haven't had a conversation about that in over a year, so.
Good, good. That's good. Anything further for the?
Just one more question. Is there a rendering of the structure, the proposed building?
There will be. The paperwork that you have in front of us had the architectural firm just kind of put something together as far as what the layout is going to look, look like. Before we do anything, of course, there'll be drawings with, you know, architectural, electrical, and everything done.
So right now, we don't know what?
As far as what the drawings, the drawing that you have in front of you, no. But what I can tell you is it's going to be exactly what we have there now. There're going to be brick facades on the west or east and west sides of the building. There're going to be metal buildings with the green and the tan that we have now.
Anything further? Thank you very much. We appreciate you being out here this evening. I'm now going to close the public hearing on ZC 23-3. Item number eight is public comments. I've got, I think, three people signed up to speak under this, and I usually call them in order, but I got two different things tonight. So I'm probably going to get the names wrong, so if you just come to the podium, give us your name the way you say it, instead of the way I say it, and your address, we'll be good to go. And the first one this evening is Paul Ruona. You just state your name and your address, sir, for the record, then you have the floor for the next three minutes.
Paul Ruona, 4133 Well Road. I was really hoping this thing would be poorly attended. I hate getting up in front of you.
You'll be just fine.
Izelle Park. Back in 2008, that was supposed to get started, then the economic collapse happened. I was 54. I'm now 68. Just talked to a park and rec person about a month and a half ago. I said, oh, you're over here getting ready to get everything started. He goes, uh, no, no, they're, they're still not going to, they said they weren't going to do anything about that till next year. This is like about the third or fourth year in a row, they've said, oh, we're going to start it next year, and then it doesn't happen. I, it's right across the street from me. I have to use a wheelchair a lot of the times because of my feet. I'd love to be able to just walk across the street with my wheelchair and use a path and go through there. I'm just curious, what is preventing that park? I mean, the Hulsey Pusser, Pusser Hulsey Park, whatever that is down the street just past Idlewild Road, that's, you know, was on the books for a long time apparently too, and it got done first. So I just, I'm curious why nobody's, what the holdup is.
Normally, I don't answer questions under, under public comments because that's normally what they are, is truthfully.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's fine, that's fine.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's why we're here, serve the citizens. But under public comments, the official public comment from the mayor is, that's a Mecklenburg County Park, and we've been in there here for as long as you have been. So until they set it in their budget and they spend their dollars, we have no control over their schedule or their timeframe. So I would suggest that you continue to call our Mecklenburg County Commissioners and speak to them about that.
Any, any recommendations about who I should be setting a fire under?
I wouldn't miss anybody on the list.
Okey dokey. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next be Sheri Abel.
Good evening, Mayor Simmons, and Commissioners and fellow citizens. My name is Dr. Sheri Abel, and I'm just here to remind you, I was looking for us to do something with the Arts and Science Advisory Council where they can give us some money to add to our community. And what we've been looking at, this would be Marie Frey, Maria Frey and myself, we took a look at the Historic Society, and they've got a lot of things going on. So we, I went over there and I spoke with them, and they were telling me some of the things that they're doing and would like to add. And they have just one little problem, and that is, well, first of all, let me tell you some of the things they do, and they'll, they'll better understand. To name a few of the activities, they, that are already being enjoyed by the community are as follows. The Christmas Tea, Spring rodeo, Mint Hill and Mecklenburg County History Classes, the Great Wagon Road, and Settlers of the Mint Hill. If you haven't seen those classes, they're really great. They really are, they're really interesting. And it kind of tells you what this community's all about and how it all got started. And then there's other things such as activities for the children to learn about the one-room schoolhouse, the doctor's office, and the country store. And they do different little activities with the kids so they can see how people, what they had to use back then for, to barter for pharmacy for meds and that type of stuff, and for store, goods in your store. Then the Historical Society Board now have the benefit of the barn, which hopefully you guys have been over there to see that. And they, in the future, they plan to do more events in the barn, such as more history classes they're developing, as well as health education for the safety of our community. Recently, Dr. Dodd gave a lecture on cardiac health. Another program has been planned to teach the citizens of Mint Hill and surrounding communities on how to perform CPR and on the use of AED. The society has been able to raise donations and have benefited from volunteers. However, there is an ongoing expense. And to promote more opportunities for the education of our community, adults and children, there is a need for audiovisual equipment, including and not limited to projector, screens, audio and speaker equipments, and microphone stands. And in doing this, they'll be able to, you know, further the education we can give the adults. And if you're like me, I love history, so anything they want to share with me, I'm really greatly appreciative of. And then, of course, our children can always benefit from learning more and more about our community. So I, this is just an update on what we're doing, where we're at, and what will happen is going forward, they will, they, meaning the Historical Society, they will sit down and look at the cost of all this, and then we will apply with the Arts and Science Advisory Council to see if we can get some money from them to purchase those items. So that's just a little update, let you know where we're at with all that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm going to break my own rule again. Would you do me a favor and make sure you meet with Paul, who just spoke before? He's on the Arts and Science Council, I believe. So make sure that you have a conversation with him. I think you'll have a lot in common.
This right here?
Thank you.
Oh, okay, we'll.
All right. Our final speaker, I think it says Michael Mox, is that correct? You'll come to the podium and pronounce it correct. If I butchered it, and you give us your address, then you're free to speak, sir.
No, you nailed it. It's Michael Mox. I live at 10718 Kemtown Square in Mint Hill. I came to talk tonight about the proposed development on Lawyers Road at 11110 Lawyers Road. I am on the Board of Commissioners for the Brighton Park Town Homeowners Association. And at our meeting this month, we, we all had some concerns that we wanted to bring up to make sure that before you guys made your decision, you had our concerns on your mind. The Evans Road, where what appears to be the main exit and entrance into this new property, or new development on the property, is busy at times. It backs up, and, and people use that road as a cut-through from 51 to Lawyers. When I described this project to one of the guys that I work with who grew up in Mint Hill, he was struggling to understand where it was, and finally, it dawned on him, he said, oh, the cut-through, because that's what he knows that area is. And that is difficult for, for those of us who live in the neighborhood, the, the traffic is fast, and they aren't exactly polite as they come through. We are concerned that the increase in traffic that this property, that this development will cause will further draw people into the neighborhood and, and we're concerned about the safety of the people walking in the neighborhood, the cars driving in the neighborhood. I also had another concern from looking at the plans that have been proposed, there does not appear to be any screening at the rear of the property. I assume that many of the trees will be cut down at this, when this development takes place, and, and there will be a significant number of cars that will be parking facing the homes in our neighborhood at, at all hours of the day, obviously. It's not just office space, that's retail space, they'll be open past dark. And I believe that there will be a significant amount of headlights shining into the homes that currently do not have that problem. So I don't know what the approval process is. Is this just a rezoning, or is this our last chance at having a say in how this development proceeds?
I'm three for three, Arna. Breaking every, breaking every rule I've set so far, I must stay consistent. There will be a vote on this under item number 10 this evening. There was a public hearing held on this. The plan was presented. It went to the planning board, who sent it back, and I believe it says favorable recommendation from the planning board, and there will be the final vote on it this evening. So, but you have been heard.
Yes, sir. I, I understand it's the final vote for the rezoning, but, but there's obviously more approvals that they'll need. I just wanted to know if those came from Mint Hill, or if that was strictly Mecklenburg County and the state that they were coming?
It's a combination.
It's a combination.
Combination.
Okay.
Yeah, but they've got setback rules and a number of other things, and I'd be glad to discuss the plan with you afterwards, so we can look at it together and see what your concerns are. If it passes or fails, I'll still stand and talk to you. How's that?
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Item number nine, presentation of the fiscal year 2021, 2022 audit by ANR Craven, CPA, PLLC. If you'll come to the podium, give us your name and address, please, so you have the floor, ma'am.
I'm Ann Craven, and I am the sole member of ANR Craven, CPA, PLLC, and I conducted the audit this year for the town of Mint Hill. The, I don't know how much all of you know about these, I don't know how much all of you know about these audits, but if you open the book and look at it, you'll see basically two sets of financial statements in here. And those were put in place by the North Carolina Local Government Commission. The first set that you see is net position, that's full accrual, that's the most complete form of the accounting of the town of Mint Hill. The other ones are what we call the, and that's what we call the GASB statements, Governmental Accounting Standards Board. The others are the fund statements. Those are what is used to run the operations of the town itself. So, and looking at those statements, what we have here is the town has determined that they want to run the town on, so that the unassigned balance of those funds is 25% of the general fund expenditures. That's so that they can have money available when things come, come into play, something they may need, critical needs of some sort. If you look at these financial statements, the town's unassigned fund balance is 33.76. So the town is in a very good position. And to give you some kind of a perspective on this, the local government commissions as a troubled town runs on 8%. So that kind of gives you some kind of a perspective on how well the town is doing. So that kind of gives you some kind of a perspective on how well the town is doing. The unassigned fund balance of the town is $5,576,000, I believe. Yeah, $5,576,647. Look at that as kind of a savings account for the town of Mint Hill. That's what you have available to spend for new projects, whatever you need it for. The total fund balance, however, down at the bottom is $12,697,000. Now, some of that is restricted. It's restricted by state statute. If you have so much in funds, it tells you you can only put, you must put some aside for restrictions by state statute. Power bill money is restricted. It can only be spent on streets, sidewalks, that kind of thing. Drug forfeiture money that is captured by the police department is restricted, and is, can only be spent on things, equipment, stuff for the police department, or it's given back to them when they are released from prison. The ARPA funds, American Recovery Plan, those are restricted. Then you have two other categories, which are committed and assigned. Those have to be used for the purposes set aside for, or they can be amended by the board in certain circumstances. Other than that, that's all I have. Anybody have any questions for me?
Mr. Long?
No, sir.
Mr. Holton?
No, sir.
No. I didn't get your name out.
No, sir.
I want to thank you very much for all your hard work. I have an accounting background, I come from an accounting family. I know these audits aren't a whole lot of fun, it's not something that we all want to do on the weekend, but we appreciate the work you've done for the town over the years in making sure we're on the straight and narrow, and I appreciate it. Item number 10, discussion and decision on ZC 23-1 filed by L R H Holdings LLC for tax parcel 135-381-60, located at 11110 Lawyers Road, to request permission to develop the property for commercial office building with associated parking frontage to exceed code requirements. John?
The Planning Board met February 20th and have had a favorable recommendation, and they offer the recommended consistency statement, and I'll read it here. ZC 23-1 was found to be consistent with the land use plan. The land use plan, downtown subarea plan, indicated office employment. Office employment was described as mixed-use areas targeted as primary locations for job generation uses in settings that meet today's workplace expectations. Therefore, ZC 23-1 was found to be reasonable and in the public interest, based on the information presented and reviewed with this petition. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Commissioner Henderson?
The residents spoke about the property adjoining, kind of the property line of Brighton Park residents. Do you know how that's gonna be impacted? I mean, how that's gonna interface with that community, and if there is gonna be some type of barrier, or something that kind of separates that property from those homeowners?
I wish I could show it, but I think you have the plan in front of you. So the area to the rear of the property is untouched, so they're not clearing that, so the woods will remain intact. And I can offer, the gentleman, he's welcome to call me, and I can talk to him through all those points as well.
And I was gonna show him that as well, on this map. It'll show you the setbacks and the streams and all the other kind of thing that's between here and there. It's quite a distance, although it doesn't appear that it will be. In addition, do you remember what the wall height is back there on that? I was looking on my plan here, and I can't see the wall height on that parking area back there. Isn't there a wall?
A wall height?
On the parking spaces back there on the backside?
Do you know that number? I think last time it was kind of in flux.
I'd say 12 feet backside of the, were you referring?
I'm sorry, I didn't even see you present. Please give us your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Austin Coleman. I'm with V3 Southeast 4901 Zephyr Lane, Charlotte, North Carolina.
What I'm asking, Austin, is when you pull into the back of the parking lot, and the rear of your car is facing Lawyers Road, the front of your car is facing towards the creek, across towards Evans Road?
Yep.
The wall that goes, the wall that goes across the back of that parking structure?
So that's gonna be partly open, the bottom level of the deck. So that's gonna be about 12 feet, and then it's gonna taper up to the top.
Based on the, right.
Yep.
So in his question, the homes that are immediately affected as they come onto Evans Road, the lights from those cars should not even be shooting across the back into those?
A backside barrier wall is.
Barrier wall, correct?
Yeah, to block the headlights facing that way, or gas plants.
And while I've got you there, we did all the traffic studies with NCDOT, and took all the suggestions that they gave us as far as increased traffic. Am I correct?
Correct. We have two, we have road widening, an extension of a turn lane, an added turn lane on Evans, and then also the addition of a full-service traffic light at that intersection.
Did I get most of your questions?
If you're coming west on 51, and you want to go to this property, do you go all the way to Lawyers, or you cut through the neighborhood?
You can go all the way to Lawyers, turn at the traffic light.
That's what you've been doing?
Absolutely, and I own property in Brighton Park. I'd still go to Lawyers. I'm sorry, Commissioner Holton?
And that's, it looks like, I mean, from what I've seen and from what we talked about during the last public hearing and everything, with the other entrance into parking coming off of Lawyers there, which that's gonna be a right turn in, right turn out, correct?
Correct.
So basically, if you're leaving and need to make a left on Lawyers, that's the only time you're really gonna go onto Evans, if they're going left onto Lawyers.
And the majority of parking is towards that Lawyers entrance. The ramp down to the bottom level, the deck, is on that right side of the plan. So it kind of pushes everything to Lawyers, but like you said, if you need to take a left, you will have to go Evans, up to the light, and then take a left.
Is there, John, is there anything that we could do for this cut-through, as far as, it's 25 miles an hour in there right now, right?
I don't know if there's anything we can do. I mean, if you, remember, that road was built by the commercial center for the purpose. So, yeah, there is traffic, but it was intended to be that way. I mean, it was built that way. But, and of course, I used to live on that street, so I'm very familiar with it, and it is a lot of traffic at certain times, but I don't know what we can do about it. I mean, it is what it is. I mean, it's a connection to a commercial development, and it's a grocery store, it's gonna get a lot of business.
Yeah.
I'm not sure what we can do to answer your question, or if we would want to do anything. I'm not sure.
Commissioner Long?
Two questions. On page three of the staff report, it's noting a signal at Evans Road and Lawyers Road, and how is that funded?
That is gonna be by the developer, outside of funding for the town, I guess, traffic pole, the lights, light poles, that are, I guess, unique to Mint Hill, but everything else is funded by the developer.
Okay. And I'm struggling a little bit with the third line on that, just the wording, and you can clarify it for me. It says Evans Road to be widened slightly more symmetrically. What does that mean?
So currently, at that intersection, there is a, for whatever reason, there is a, the road's skinny, like, it's a little skinnier right before you get to the intersection, if you're going up Evans to Lawyers, and we're just widening that to make a continuous curb line.
Okay. I just struggled with the use of the English language there. And I was involved with, as well as the mayor was when this was approved, that we did that to slow down traffic.
Well, and the developer originally had intended for parking to take place there. So you can imagine what a mess we'd have if we were, people were seriously parking there with the traffic backup that happens there. And I agree with John, my wife and I lived in there for quite a while and dealt with the same things. I think the traffic light is gonna solve a lot of the backup problems that happens there anyway. I really do. We came by there yesterday, well, we counted eight cars as we were coming down Lawyers Road that were backed out there trying to get out, so I think it's gonna be safer with the traffic light there as well. Any further questions? Hearing none?
I'm sorry, I saw somewhere where there was a walkway, a pedestrian walkway. Did I see that somewhere? That there's a pedestrian walkway?
It's right where the entrance comes in off Evans Road.
Okay.
It's existing.
Okay. And is that with the little manual thing, where you kind of, you know, the manual walkway thing, it's not like that?
Uh-uh.
So that intersection will have pedestrian signals?
Right. But not where the existing walkway is.
Right, that's what I'm asking. Okay, okay. That's all, I'm sorry.
Hearing no further questions or discussions, I'll entertain a motion on whether to accept or modify the consistency statement as presented by the Mint Hill Planning Board.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to accept the consistency statement as presented by the Mint Hill Planning Board.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 10B, I will entertain a motion and decision on ZC 23-1.
I make a motion that we approve ZC 23-1.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Item number 11, discussion and decision on ZC 23-2 filed by 8235FR LLC for tax parcels numbers 139-011-09, 139-011-11, 139-011-12, 139-011-23, and 139-011-47, to request rezoning from IG C Z D to IG to allow self-storage and vehicle storage, property located at 8227 Fairview Road. John?
At the last meeting, Planning Board gave a favorable recommendation and recommended the following consistency statement. ZC 23-2 is found to be consistent with the land use plan. Land use plan indicates industrial light. Light industrial areas were intended to support a mix of innovative businesses that could benefit from the co-location of related complementary industries. The mix of uses ranged from light industrial operations and makerspaces to supporting office, retail, service uses. Therefore, ZC 23-2 was found to be reasonable and in the public interest, based on the information presented and reviewed with this petition. Happy to answer any questions.
I believe I saw the applicant present. Do I have any correct questions for John or the applicant? Commissioner Long?
No, sir.
Mr. Holton?
I think it's just ensuring that all along 218 there, that, with that buffer, that there's fencing, so you can't see any of the vehicle storage.
I'm getting ahead, none. Mayor Proton Dalton?
No, sir.
Commissioner Henderson?
Uh, let's see if I had a question. Uh, no.
Hearing no further questions or discussion, I will entertain a motion to accept or modify the consistency statement as presented by the Mint Hill Planning Board.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to accept consistency statement as presented by the Mint Hill Planning Board.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number 11B, motion and decision on ZC 23-2.
Make a motion to approve item number ZC 23-2.
I have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Item number 12, discussion and decision on resolution to abandon an unbuilt right-of-way Margaret Circle in the town of Mint Hill, North Carolina.
I should ask earlier, Mr. Mayor, what's gonna happen with this right-of-way once abandoned?
It goes to the adjacent property owners, so, which happens to be one owner. So I think there is the original owner that recently sold it. I think she would get some of it, but I think she's giving it to the lady that bought it. So yes, this property will be now owned by the lady that owns the properties next to it.
Okay.
But it was originally just a right-of-way, correct?
Yeah, and the records, it was, it wasn't really clear.
It's kind of questioning whether we own it, or they own it, or who owns it, right?
It has popped up on the records, and I think they said since the '60s. It shows as right-of-way, so.
I wish we had the map on the screen to show how much sense it doesn't make.
I'm not sure, yeah. I'm really not sure why that.
Yeah, I'd be glad to share that picture with anybody that'd like to see it. It makes absolutely no sense that it's there anyway, so, all right.
I think that's the point, I think I was trying to make.
Yeah, you nailed it.
Who's responsible for it now?
You nailed it. You nailed it. All right, I'll entertain a motion on, I may entertain a motion on the resolution to abandon an unbuilt right-of-way on Margaret Circle in the town of Mint Hill, North Carolina.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number 13, established filing fees for November 2023 municipal elections. We have a memo from our town clerk. Did you want to make any speech or anything on this, Michelle, or did you just like me to read the memorandum? You have a memo here that she asked us to please consider the filing fees for the 2023 candidates running for either mayor or Board of Commissioners in accordance with GS163-294.2E. On April 8th of 2021, the Mint Hill Board of Commissioners voted to set the 2021 filing fee as follows. Mayor, $50. Board of Commissioners, $25. Do I have any input from anybody who would like to speak to this matter? Or would like, somebody like to put it into form of a motion, what those fees might be?
Mayor, I make a motion that we keep the fees as the same as we previously.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Do I have any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number 14, other business and council matters. Who wants to start, which Ian? Commissioner Henderson?
Just a couple of things. I was able to attend the virtual, or virtual for me, the Elected Officials Stormwater Workshop, which was sponsored by the Regional Stormwater Partnership of the Carolinas. There were actually 31 municipalities and organizations involved. A lot of really good information. I know what an MS4 is now.
Yeah, I thought of that.
But that was very informative information, and hopefully, they're gonna load the slides and everything on their website, so I'd be happy to share that information. The Mint Hill Historical Society is having a free volunteer orientation on April 1st at 10 o'clock at the Carl McEwen Historic Village, and this is gonna give opportunities for students to complete service hours and adults to stay active. And then lastly, I met with the Government Relations Manager for the Arts and Science Council and some of their volunteer team, and they just wanted to really reiterate that they've invested in various Mint Hill-based creative and cultural activities, and have a commitment to continuing to do so and supporting local artists. And so, information about how they support Mint Hill can be found on their website at artsandscience.org.
Mayor Pro Tim Dalton?
Yes, sir. The Chamber of Commerce was, recently had voted in their new board of directors, and they are in the process of planning their annual golf tournament. Also, the CARPO meeting back in February, they authorized NCDOT to conduct a study to increase traffic along the I-77 Condor by, proposed would be to look at adding managed lanes, which would be like toll lanes from the uptown to the South Carolina border. That's all.
That's the best summation of a CARPO meeting I've ever heard in my life. Takes three and a half hours to put one on, and he can sum it up in two sentences. Nice job. Commissioner Holton?
Uh, no, I don't have anything, sir.
Commissioner Long?
Yes, sir. I was on a Charlotte Mecklenburg School Zoom meeting today for about an hour. They have secured a consultant to hire a new superintendent, and I was joined by representatives from Cornelius, Davison, Huntersville, Pindell. And their questions to us was the strengths of the school system, the weaknesses, and what we felt, the challenges for the new superintendent. This board, CMS board, will vote on Tuesday night to have the right criteria, and then they will look over six to eight applicants sometime in the future for hiring this new superintendent. Hope it goes well for them. The, and last night I was, attended a Central Carolina Council meeting, which includes the nine counties that are around us. Couple of bullet points from that. There's a great need in our region for funding nutrition needs of the elderly and disabled and underserved population, and with the ARPA funds expiring in the real near future, there's gonna be great needs in, much more in our area than we've seen. And as always, transportation is the biggest challenge for our nine-county region to adapt to future growth with the lack of funding coming out of Raleigh. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna, I'm gonna reiterate what I said last month for those, those that are here this evening, thank you. We definitely want the, the public's input. We want the public's input as early as possible. We had a conversation during some of our recent meetings, and we have a, a great tool on our website. It's called eVerify or eVerification, or I'm not sure what exactly it is for sure. All I know is John was playing on it this week because my phone went off three different times. But what that does is as soon as somebody files for rezoning or any change in zoning, you can get notified with a text. And when you get that, you get these ZC numbers that I've read all night long sent to your phone. You can click on that number and see exactly what the applicant's asking for. I believe it shows the schedule for the public hearing and, and the process for that so that everybody knows and share with your neighbors, please, is we have a public hearing like we had this evening. It'll go to our planning board after that, who will then send a recommendation back to this board to either accept or deny the, the recommendation. So we do want that input. We appreciate your input tonight. We really do. We, we do listen to that. And, and a lot of times you'll bring up things that we haven't thought of, and we appreciate that too, but we want you to be involved in, on the things that are going on in the community. It's no fun when we just sit up here and make decisions with, without having all the knowledge and all the input from the community, because our job up here is really to represent the citizens and not make decisions for them. So bring your neighbors next month. We don't have cookies or anything else. We have these old boring meetings that we try to get through as, as fast as we possibly can, but we want you to be involved in it. So when you get home this evening, go to the town website. Somebody give me a head nod. Is it eVerify, eVerification?
E-notify.
E-notify. See, I messed it up three times. That's, that's why I ask you to give your names and addresses up here. I can't even read. But I think it's at the top of the page and at the bottom of the page. You can't, I miss it. And all you do is put in an email address or a phone number or both, and you can get emails and everything else. One other thing, we, we had one of our police officers today involved, involved in a wreck. Somebody pulled out in front of her, and we had a pretty nasty wreck down here on 51. She's doing well, last I heard. The other, the other two people involved with the wreck are doing well the last time I heard, but there's gonna be a lot of sore people in the morning, so for those of you that hit a knee and pray, pray every night, if you'd keep our police department, our fire department, and all those people that are out there risking their lives for us every day, I'd appreciate it this evening as well. If anybody doesn't have anything else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We're adjourned.